Seven o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order, the Board of Selectmen, September 4th at seven o'clock, 2019. Get up and do a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. One of the things I want to make note of early on is we're going to be, going into recess at 7:15. We'll be conducting a public hearing regarding the potential conveyance of the East Haddam Free Public Library to the town of East Haddam. And then, once that public hearing finishes, we will reconvene the Board of Selectmen's meeting and finish it up. So, 7:15, we're going to take a break. It's seven. I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have one set of minutes to approve, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, August 21st, 2019, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, corrections?
I did not see any.
Okay. Sue? Okay, thank you. We don't have any correspondence this evening.
Did you want to vote on it?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving too quickly. I don't see Laurie DeKino here tonight to report on the ambulance, but I do know that they're continuing to have good reports and they're doing well. I can tell you the last four or five days, just seeing what's been going on, it's been nonstop, almost like a machine gun, the calls that they've had, all day and all night. So, they've been very, very busy. Went down to Colchester, to the DOT this morning. Route 82, going from 151, which is essentially at Shag Bar, right there at the bridge wrestling cats, all the way down to 148, which is Ferry Road, is going to be resurfaced. They've been working on the catch basins for quite some time now. And September 25th, they're going to start milling. It's going to be three days of milling. And October 7th, they intend to start paving. They're going to put down about two inches of paving and make life a little bit difficult down that way again. Plan of Conservation and Development was approved at a town meeting on the 27th of August, along with what's called a bird's nest. That's that swing device the kids use down at the beach. About all I've got for the report. So, we're looking for citizens' concerns at this point. Anything from citizens, the audience? Okay, thank you. Unfinished business. East Haddam Village Revitalization Committee, they met August 28th and will issue the RFP probably on the 19th of September. And that's going to be moving forward at that point. Couple of minor corrections that the lawyer had recommended, but nothing of any significance. So, that's moving along quite nicely. Transfer station, nothing really on that to change at this point. Citation hearing, we haven't done anything with that. Control of animals was originally scheduled, or intended to be scheduled, for tomorrow night for public hearing. And because some of the principles were not able to make it, we're going to have to reschedule that. Looking forward, it looks like it's probably going to be about the 30th of this month. So, towards the end of the month, hopefully we'll be able to get everyone involved that needs to be. Cemetery committee discussion, nothing there. Changes. Transfer station, the waste agreement. Think you've got copies of that today. And basically, if we don't approve something tonight, it's going to be difficult to get it to town meeting prior to the election. So, it'd be good if we could. And have you had a chance to read that and look through it? There's basically three options. One is a five-year with a $2 a year increment. And the second is a three-year option, which we actually were able to get a copy of the contract for it. And the biggest changes that you'll see, when you go out and you look at the schedule of fees and you look at the recycling material, if we go to a three-year contract, they're going to be working at $35 a ton, increasing it $5 a year. And that's how it'll work out. And it'll only be for three years, and then we'll be negotiating a new contract at that point. If we go with a five-year option... I don't see my five-year there. Okay.
It starts at 30 and it goes up to $2.
Yeah, it goes up $2 a year. And the one they're offering now, at the end of three years, after 36 months, every six months, they'll take a look at the rate they're charging us. And the thought is that if recyclables start to be valuable again, it goes up. And if you look at the second page of the fee schedule, what they're offering is that dollar for dollar, anything that's over $50 per ton, they'll give us back. And the examples that they offer, if it goes up to $60 a ton, then they'll give us back $10 a ton. And the fee will be down to 38. If the value goes up to $100 a ton and the processing fee is 38, it'd be $50 over. We'll get a rebate of... Rebate of $12 doesn't read right.
Yes, because the rate would be in excess of the 38. So...
So, if the value's 100, it should be dollar for dollar.
Basically, we get $50 back because it went to 100. So, we'd get, rather than the processing fee of 38, we'd actually be getting $12.
We'd actually get $12. That's what was blowing me away. We'd start earning money on it again. Doesn't seem likely that that's going to happen. But any thoughts on that? Any thoughts on what we're looking at there?
Well, that's clarified and answered some of my concerns, because I wasn't sure exactly how they were representing it, what their period was between when they were going to evaluate it. And the other question I had was the amount, who determines that rate? As far as a three-year contract that inflates so quickly that it would be probably not to our advantage at this point. Since they're basically the only game in town, we have to...
Seems like we've got to select among these three.
Yes.
And the original option remains, where it's a $2 increment each year for five years.
Yes, but there is no renegotiation.
No, no renegotiation. It's just a straight contract.
So, the new five-year contract does, at year three, does allow that?
No, on the assumption that recyclable material becomes valuable again.
Right.
And that's kind of a...
That's the whole point.
What?
That was the whole point of redoing it.
Yeah. And, you know, you've got to look out and say, well, do you think it's actually going to start coming back in terms of value? I don't know.
That's, I, Cristobal, doesn't go that far.
Yeah, likewise. Basic, you're going to be processed here in the United States, and our labor costs are high. And I'm not sure that it's going to become that valuable that fast.
If it doesn't, it doesn't really impact it anyway, so... But I think having that option is worth its valuable for the town.
I think that was the only issue we had with the contract, and they fixed it. So, there really is no reason to go to a three-year, I think.
Stay with the five, but do we want the five-year with the option of getting a refund?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a five-year Waste-Hauling Processing Agreement. Sull Disposal Municipal Waste, Single-Stream Recycling and Municipal Hauling Service Willamette Waste Company, for approval, with the option that we will get a refund after three years if the value of recyclables goes up. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to send that to a town meeting for approval.
Board of Finance.
And Board of Finance.
We need the second.
Okay.
I know, actually, Sue did.
Amy, you're not at that point yet. Building Department, fee structure. Sue, did you have a chance to meet with Bill?
I didn't have a chance to meet with Bill, but I went through it some more and had some discussions about it. There aren't that many that are changing. They're more related to the residential and not the commercial. I guess I was more concerned that commercial rates were changing. I think there, again, there's only a few of them, and it's not going into effect until October 1st, so I guess I'm fine with the changes that I can make.
Okay. So, you can handle the changes there.
Yeah, make a motion.
Yeah. How would I do with my motion sheet? I'm losing things here. Aye. Thank you.
It was right at the top, right at the top, right there.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to approve the proposal fee. Schedule for the Building Department permits to become effective October 1st, 2019, and authorize a building official to keep East Haddam educational fee portion current with the state of Connecticut educational fees. Get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing I was going to say is that, you know, Ben alluded to that our fees were way out of whack in comparison to the other towns, and the information that was presented indicates they're not that far out of it. So, yes, I have no problem with the new proposal.
Okay. Sue?
No, I would like an additional as a follow-up, just to have an answer on something. The chairman of EDC said they had many people contact them about the fees, and I'd like to, I know there was one. I'd like to know how many people contacted them about the fees.
I can ask him for that.
If you can just get that information, I'm curious.
I know I was contacted by one. It was very vehement about it.
Was that the gentleman that wrote us the letter? So, to the best of our knowledge, we have only one complaint so far.
Because it was the same person that contacted EDC.
As I understand it, the EDC chairman was contacted by others. I don't know how many. Okay, that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we are indeed at 7:15. And we're going to go to a recess at this point. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And discuss the East Haddam Free Public Library. I think that's what most of you are here for, so we'll go forward with that. Just to recap a little bit on the history of what we're looking at, to go through it. I've got a lot of information here, probably more than you want to hear all at once, but I'll do a little bit of it. The East Haddam Free Public Library is built in 1919. The Rathbun was built in 1935, and they operated independently of the town initially. And there's always been some small stipend going in that direction, all the way back to 1889, when the East Haddam Free Library was first established, and the town held them out a little bit. Over time, that became quite a bit more. When I got involved 12 years ago, it was approaching $100,000 for each of them. 2013, a close look was taken at the library system, and the realization was that their endowments, which are separate, two separate endowments, were never going to be able to sustain them long-term, and that we probably had to get into a library system for the town. And at that point, we created a unified library system, and the Rathbun was offered to the town. We went to town meeting and accepted it. East Haddam Free Library remained an independent building. The town took over all the books, took over the responsibility of operating it, and continued to contribute a significant amount of money to the East Haddam Free Library in terms of maintenance, even though we didn't own it. And there's a lot of confusion about that. Three years ago, when I first got involved, I went down, we looked at the assessor's card. The assessor's card for the East Haddam Free Library said the town owned it. And I'd heard contrary, so we looked into it and checked it out thoroughly. As it turned out, someone creating the card, and this is perhaps as far back as the '50s, had entered the town as the owner and we were not. The East Haddam Free Library Reading Room Association actually owned the building. They owned the property and they owned the building. So, there was a lot of confusion about that. What happened back in 2013 was the town was offered the Rathbun, we voted, came up with an ordinance, took it over, and became responsible for it. We created a single library unified system, and we took over the operations of it. The East Haddam Free Library Association, or the Reading Room Association, gave us the use of the building. And we've done minimal repairs on it since then, keeping it operational, but we've not really done the kind of repairs that are needed for that building. The thought always was that eventually the town is going to be given that building. The Reading Room Association would turn it over to the town, and we would have a two library system, we'd own both buildings, and fully fund the operations. There are endowments with the Reading Room Association, and there are endowments with the Rathbun. Bank America handles the Rathbun endowments, and every year, we realize about $40,000 from that. They come up with an amount that they're going to turn over to the town to help the operation of our library system. The East Haddam Reading Room Association also turns over money each year. They determine out of their endowments, the finances that they have, what they're going to turn over to the town to help out as well. When both libraries were created, a very, very carefully written and all-inclusive document was created that said these libraries have to last forever, the endowments have to go for it, various individuals and groups endowed a great deal of money in order to maintain them. And the way they were written, we had to accept them with a provision that we would maintain them as libraries, ad infinitum, forever. The East Haddam Free Library has a similar requirement. In order for them to give us the building, to give up the property, in the case of the Rathbun, we went to the probate court, and they handled that, went to the Attorney General, got the state's permission with us committing to the fact that we would maintain the libraries. When we went to do the same thing with the East Haddam Free Library, the probate court looked at it and felt they were not in a position to do it. We had to go to Superior Court, and actually do have a hearing. Took about a year and a half, and we finally got, last spring, a stipulated judgment, which gave permission to the Reading Room Association to turn that building and that property over to the town, to offer it to us as a gift. With that stipulated judgment, we're moving forward now, and what we're looking at here is the idea that we need to go to the people of town. We're doing a public hearing right now, get everybody's opinion, define where people stand, and we're going to take this to the Board of Finance, we're going to take it to Planning and Zoning. There's something called an 824 that Planning and Zoning has to do in connection with accepting property, transfer of town property. And they're going to review it and offer their opinion on how we ought to handle it, whether it's good or bad. Board of Finance is going to look at it, offer their opinion on whether it's good or bad, and then we're going to go to town meeting following that. And at that point, in part, perhaps depending on how people respond tonight, we're going to either go to a referendum, or we can just go to a town meeting. It's really going to be a 10, what's the mood of the town that's going to make that decision? If it's something where there's a lot of opposition, a lot of support, maybe we should be doing a referendum. And a couple of things that have happened recently that are a little bit confusing. The East Haddam News published an article, and it was a lot of information that was not understood. I don't think there's anything malicious or anything, but it was just a misunderstanding about what the real finances were for it. There's a lot more people here than I printed, but you might want to take copies of that. And I'm going to review what the finances that we're looking at really are in terms of taking that building over and the Rathbun itself. So, pass some of those around and let people look at them. The newspaper had reported that, and I forget, I think it was the Rathbun was going to be $1.2 million to bring it completely back, and that the East Haddam Free was going to be $2.3, for a total of $3.5 million. Those are not correct. And I can understand where they got confused by it and reported something a little bit out of line. Back in 2017, we retained Kellner Associates to do an ADA assessment of the buildings. And the question was, neither building is ADA compliant. If we were to bring them up to ADA compliance, American Disability Act, that's giving us ramps, giving us elevators, giving us access for people who are handicapped. And I think it was all left on one side, or are you guys getting any of those sheets? Pass some of them across so the others can see them. And I'll just scan it out for you. Initially, he did a survey on the 22nd of May. And what he came with, and this is no contingency fees, ordinarily, when you come up with a number, there's a contingency fee, and you kind of look at it, you take 10% and add that to what you come up with. That's for the unexpected, for the things that are going to happen, and they always do. So, this is kind of a bare bones number. The ADA costs for it were about $20,800. Now, that doesn't include an elevator, that doesn't include a real fancy deal, but it remains legal. We've also looked at it, we've got problems with the heating systems, with the cooling systems, there's no insulation in the buildings, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, in some cases ramps. So, we looked at it as a town more recently and said, what's it going to cost to straighten this building out and make it right? And for the Rathbun, that figure came up to $357,720. Large air conditioning, heating, these are major systems and major work that has to be done. The total cost for the Rathbun, bare bones with no elevator, is about $378,520. Same thing for the East Haddam Free Library. And remember, we already owned the Rathbun, so this is not something we're talking about tonight in terms of wire. East Haddam Free, the ADA costs were going to be $153,000. Repairs and maintenance, about $314,700. For a total cost of making it bare bones acceptable, a $467,700. It's a total cost of about $850,000 for the two libraries, we're going to go down that road. When we saw those, we went back at them and said, you know, we really want to know what it takes with elevators to make them full ADA compatible. So, Kellner Associates went back and went to work again. This time, they did the first numbers with contingency fees. And for the work that they were talking about, the ADA costs, they added 10% to it, and you get the second set of numbers. That's $24,000 for the Rathbun for the ADA. The $357,720 remains constant for $381,720. The East Haddam Free Public Library, they come up with $174,000 now, no elevators, and $314,700 for $488,700. They also came up at that point with figures if we were to install elevators in both of the libraries. The Rathbun, the ADA costs were up to $263,000. Once again, the $357,720, for a total of $610,720. So, a little over $600,000 to put an elevator in and bring the Rathbun up to standards. For the East Haddam Free Public Library, putting in an elevator was, and the other ADA requirements, was $293,300, plus the $314,700 for the repairs and maintenance, heat, air conditioning, that sort of thing, for a total of $607,700. So, the building that we're considering tonight, if we were to put in an elevator, if we were to bring it completely up, just not repair everything that needs repairing, and we don't have to do it all at once, the total cost would be $607,700. If we were to do similar, it'd be $610,720 for the Rathbun. Michael?
Yes, with the $314 number, I believe that includes $153,000 for handicap access ADA compliance, so it should actually be $153,000 less on the $314,700 number. so it should actually be $153,000 less on the $314,700 number.
Is that correct, Ron? The $314 includes the elevator?
Not the elevator. I can show you what I'm looking at.
Okay, you're coming up something a little different.
Yeah, so that's the sheet I have, and the ADA compliance is part of the number. So would it be $153 less out of that, out of this number here? If you're including the $153 in that and that.
This is his figures.
Oh, right, that's Felner's figures, and that's the total maintenance needed, but that includes $153 of Felner's figures.
Question is, is there $293,000 additional to the proposed $153,000?
Okay, Ron included those elevators in that, didn't he?
Well, he included bare bones, so no elevators in that, but that's the total cost. That's if you wanted to upgrade air conditioning, electric, insulation, and give basic ADA compliance. So it should be $153 less on the $314.
Okay, I'll buy that. Comes in even better, comes in about $1 million between the two, about $500,000 for the, I'm sorry?
I think someone just asked.
I'm sorry, do we have a question there?
Do we have the application of what the real numbers are that we're working at?
Yeah, I can correct those numbers, but basically what it, I failed to remove an item from it that should have been, I didn't realize that Ron had included that as well as about $153,000 on the East Adam Free Library. So it's actually going to be less than that to bring it up to snuff.
Oh, the $314 minus $153 and the second figure added.
Yeah, okay.
So the number I got was 400,000, 400,000, 54,000, so 454,000.
Yeah, and...
For EHFL's total.
That's what I got.
Okay, so 454, good.
That's the $153. I hadn't realized he had included that in his estimate as well.
That's why I raised my hand.
No, thank you. Was putting that together this afternoon and didn't catch it. So that's actually a lower number than that, about 140, what, or 440?
454,000.
454, roughly, okay. Okay, one of the things to keep in mind is the endowments that go with these libraries. The stipulated judgment that came from Superior Court specified that 2.5%, up to 2.5% of the average three-year balance could be given to the town each year from the Reading Room So that becomes a significant contribution to it, and the Bank America is handling the Rathbun, we get a significant contribution from them as well. And this question's been raised, I'm just trying to offer some information before we get started here. I've got the appraisals, the East Adam Free Public Library for 2017, the appraisal is Just for information again, the Rathbun has a value in 2017 of $892,140. So, for that said, I'm looking for comments, it's a public hearing, tell us what you think, what your questions are. Bernie, I see your hand back there.
What's the annual contribution of the Free Library?
I think the last one we saw was $40,000 from the Bank America for the Rathbun, and it goes into the general fund for the libraries, and I believe there's $14,000 for the East Adam Free Library.
And is it, my understanding for clarification, that if we accept these libraries, we'll never be able to, they'll never be able to be anything other than a library?
They'll be libraries. We have to maintain the library system. It is conceivable down the road that we might want to build a new library, and that will become the library system, the unified library. We don't necessarily have to use those buildings forever, it doesn't seem likely we would, but we would have to go to the Attorney General and get a special disbursement in order to do that, but that is possible.
It could be sold later, yes.
Yeah, over time, but basically we have to maintain the libraries as a system. That's our commitment, and it would be named the East Adam Free Public Library.
The term libraries, plural, is it one library, one elevator, sorry, elevators, one elevator per library?
Yeah.
The Rathbun already, two decades ago, Mark?
It has a, it has an elevator, but it's not adequate, and it can be made somewhat adequate, and that might be a savings for us.
But it was ADA compliant when it was put in.
Yeah, Michael?
So the handicap access lift at the Rathbun allows folks to get to the main floor. The elevator numbers would be to allow people to access both floors of the building.
Both floors, I remember my other questions.
So they like to turn away handicapped children during storytime, so...
And there's a restroom down there, one up?
Not upstairs.
There is a restroom on each floor.
Oh, there is? Okay. So it's just access to the lower elevator.
And some more upgrades have to be made on the main floor for full compliance, so it's partial compliance, I suppose, right now.
Okay.
Joan Dill.
And by the way, please identify yourself, stand up and identify yourself. I'd be remiss on that.
Elevator questioner was Hank Montrose.
There you go.
Joan Dill. My question is, if the Rathburn was left to the town in a trust, wouldn't there be difficulty to stop using it as a library? And then, you know, what would the market be for that beautiful building? And so I just want to be on the record that I think it's a treasure to the town. I think it's a beautiful facility and that we should do everything we can to keep it for generations to come and make it ADA accessible, because I don't like seeing when trusts and people leave things for a purpose and then future generations just disregard that. And so I love that building and I want to see it stay the way it is.
Yes, who do we have back there? Joanne?
I'm Joanne Maynard. I'm president of the East Adam Free Public Library and Reading Room Association, and I'm privileged to speak to you tonight about the library of Mudders. The library came in existence in 1899. It wasn't in that building, it actually was in the old Mudders Savings Bank. And we didn't get the building until 1919, when Mr. Purple wanted the library to be his bank near to his house. So he built the town of Mudders a library. What he did was, in his will, he gave the town the contents inside the library. This is where the biggest problem has been. The trust had always owned the building and the land, but all the contents, everything inside the books and the periodicals, all belonged to the town, and that's what he gave, which caused problems of who owns what. Because of this, we have a trust, our trust is not as large as Rathburn's. It came from people who did plays at the old convention hall that we had, Continental Hall that we had, and gave their money, the first librarian, Mrs. Brunell, left us some money. And we were fortunate enough to have good people who managed the trust, so then this year, we finally have well over $1 million in our trust. We use that money to keep the library. For years, the town always gave us money to help pay for a certain amount, but the trust always paid for everything else. When we decided to go into a one library system, both libraries had to agree that we would work together to become a one system. One of the things we had to do was, we had to fill out papers that told the town that both libraries were willing to do this. And back in 2013, we signed an agreement with the town that we two would give them our property. Now, in the agreement that we signed that had to be presented to the Selectments Meeting back in 2013, it really stated that we owned the property and we owned the building. And we have done that since, I keep telling people, but I don't care what the necessaries card says, this is what we've told them. They've known we owned the building, and this was even written in the document that we presented them. When it came, we really wanted both libraries to go at the same time. So we didn't have, you know, Rathburn here, East Adam here, because we are one system now. And we wanted both libraries, but nobody wanted to hear about our library at the time, doing very innocent Rathburns, who has over a $2 million trust. Well, finally, it came to the point where we had to do something with our library. We have offered the town other alternatives such as renting our library for 99 years for $1, or that would stop all the lawyers. But we were told that we must do exactly what the Rathbun had done and go to probate court and get permission. Well, we went to probate court, and Judge Birkenstock says, there was never a will, so why are you here? Because the Rathbun was left from a will. Ours never had a will because it was never being given away way back when. So we went to probate, she kicked us out and said, no, I won't hear it. Our choice then was to go to the Attorney General, ask them to make her either take our case or to give us an alternative, and that's how we ended up in Superior Court. When we first had done this thing where we were getting together, we were told, none of this will cost us any money. Well, we've had lawyers since that we have paid for, because we got told, you need to get a lawyer. So we did, and we had lawyers, and worked it out with Superior Court that we have the right to give the town the building. Once that happened, we had to wait so many days with a statement to go through and whatnot, we then asked for them to take the building. It's one of those things, we're not going to say it's going to be cheap for either building. Do we have to do the ADA compliance? We have for years, under both libraries, run our own system of how do we handle ADA. For the East Adam, we will deliver to your home, and that's why we have gotten away all these years. Do I think we should have, sure. Do I think there's a child, and should we have to get in the building? Either one, no way. So I'm not going to say those aren't going to be costs. But one of the agreements was that we would, when we worked this out with the town and the lawyers, that we had to up how much we would give the town. And actually, what it states is, no more than 2.5% of the rolling three years. Now, if you just take the million, and I will tell you, I think it's 1,200, now, 1,000, 1 million?
Give or take.
1,000,200. You know that's going to up us to $25,000. The town taking us allows us not to pay insurance, because though the town pays insurance because you use the building as townspeople, we also pay insurance for liabilities for the trust and all of that. So by not having to pay those other costs, if it's not insured by this group and this group, it allows us to give more money. We also have the most wonderful group of friends, and I don't want you to just think it's the directors and the boards that run the trust. Our friends are the people who buy the chairs that are all in the library right now. When Michael says, I need $1,000 worth of books, because kids aren't going to get the new nutmeg books, because the money is July before we get new, and they cost money, the friends are the ones who give $1,000 here, $1,000 there. They're our donation group. They also send letters to all of you asking you to give to our library, and that money is spent, every bit of it, on the library. They have a wonderful group that just, they are going to be doing a big book sale, I'll plug in it, for Columbus Day, and they do all these activities for basically children, because I think if Michael will agree, we probably have a large children's group that use our library.
Children and teens, yeah.
Children and teens, and that's why they do a lot of things for children's, children and teens. But they be, like, every other Tuesday, and they're working hard to make sure we spend the money. Now, nowhere have we really ourselves addressed a lot of these issues, that yes, there's nothing been done, I think we had an air conditioner fixed in the last six years, is that about right, Michael?
Yes, correct.
Okay, but we have given you $14,000 every year for six years, so I believe that comes to $84,000. And my friends have probably given you, they're a part of our group, probably another $4,000 or $5,000 more a year as well. So it's not that we're not constantly giving back to the town. We just sort of are sort of surprised that the town wasn't willing to continue with this one system, because we had a whole list of, from the transition team on, all the things and the benefits of us becoming one citizen, one group to sign our paper and make sure we gave all the town the right to do this one system. And then it was suddenly, but we don't want your building. And we're hearing now about, we're going to go to this one, this one, this one, this one. I believe with the Rathbun, it was pretty easy. I know people are saying, what about the buildings? Each of the buildings can be sold later on, but you have to approach for each building, the Attorney General, because remember, he gave us the right to give the town a library. And when we're changing usage, it's a matter of the time or whether you're going to them. I am sure both libraries, if we're getting a brand-new building, will gladly say, we agreed the town should have this, and I may not be alive by the time that new library comes, but I can't see anybody trying to stop that from being happening. But you will have to go to, that's part of that stipulation that we had. But like I said, there were a lot of negotiations. One of the things was, we were asked to give what Rathbun gives, which was supposed to be 3.5 million, 3.5 per their percentage of their trust. But we felt we couldn't afford to do that without really eating into the principle. And we've been trying to keep the principle, so you know, it's like, it'll be there for not only us, but the next group, and the next group, and the next group. So I know there was a figure in that article in the paper, and I just, but it was, you know, what can you do? You can't correct a paper when it comes to your house, you're the only one that sees it. But we have paid to the town since, and I'm not, because it really started in 1889 when we started it as a library. The group that was part of it agreed to $300, if the town would give $300. And then it got upped, because Mr. Nicholson, you hear these names, he offered $2,500 about 10 years later, if the town could match the $2,500. And it wasn't the town per se, it was people in the town that got together and matched it for them, and, you know, and the amount of money, you have to realize, you know, you're starting with a small amount. We still have people who leave us money. Our last lot was over $10,000 worth of stock that was left to our organization, just our trust going, because people love the library. And I know you all love the libraries that are the buildings, but love the one system that we have, that we have one person running now, and it's getting coordinated. I'm sure there's probably more coordination that could go, but it really has come a long way with one system.
Thank you, Joanne. Someone else? Any other comments? Any other comments? Or once, twice, three times?
She said it all.
Wow, yeah, absolutely.
I think she did. Thank you so much. And we're going to come, we're going to reconvene into the.
Close the public hearing.
I'm sorry?
Close.
I'm going to close the public hearing. All in favor? Sorry?
I think they have to close it. Do they want to close?
No, he can, he can close the public hearing. You don't have to vote.
Yeah, okay, we're good.
You guys in favor?
He can close the public hearing.
I don't want to close it if you want to keep it open.
No, no.
No, but we'll also thank you for letting us have this time.
Well, thank you for coming, especially on a difficult night like this. You're taking your life in your hands.
And it was nowhere near as bad as they said it was going to be.
I think a little farther north, they got it a lot worse. Tornadoes and hail. Okay.
Now, you'll reconvene, the Board of Selectmen meeting at a certain time.
And we are reconvening the Board of Selectmen. We need to time it at 7:49. There we go. Okay, moving on to new business.
That's 7:00 H.
We have to deal with that. Good lord, we're 7:00 H.
I gave, I gave him my paper, so I can't, I can't give him mine.
I'm looking for 7:00 H.
There's your motion list, right there.
Not the motion.
I know, but.
It's at the bottom there of the agenda, right, Lily, I think.
We'll be dealing with there. Okay, we've got a rough timeline of what we're doing. This being the fourth, we've had our public hearing. We're going to have the Board of Selectmen meeting, recess to conduct a public hearing 7:15.
Just, yeah, just get to the motion, I think.
Yeah, and, okay, just to touch on the timeline, 9:09, we're going to have a Board of Finance meeting. The 18th, Board of Selectmen will meet, approve to a call to the town meeting. The 24th, Planning and Zoning, we'll do the 8:24 public hearing. And tentatively, the 10th, October 1st, we're going to have a town meeting for this. I'm going to make a motion that the town of East Adam accept the gift donation transfer of real estate, a real and personal property, from East Adam Free Public Library and Reading Room Association, Inc. In furtherance of the creation of a single unified town library system as provided in the ordinance adopted by the town meeting on June 19th, 2013, and send acceptance of said donation to the Board of Finance, and then to the town meeting for approval. Can I get a second?
Okay.
And a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought there was another packet going for that one. Must clean up in a minute. Now, we can go on to new business. We have a request for beer and wine service for the Grange Hall. This is a, "Good afternoon, Linda. I'm making a request to allow me to serve beer and wine at our event on Sunday, October 13th. Event should be from approximately 2:00 p.m. until 4:30 p.m. or so. It's a reception after a baptism, so it's not any type of event where there'll be a copious amount of alcohol available to our guests. Thank you for considering the request, Ashley Smith." And that said, I'm going to make a motion to approve the serving of beer and wine at the Grange Hall for the baptism reception, October 13th, 2019. Get a second? Okay, discussion on that? All in favor?
Did you get a second?
Yeah, I did.
You did? Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
You hear that?
No, I'm sorry, my ears must be.
You get a set of these.
Are you banning seconding anything?
No, 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 no.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain.
There we go. Now you catch on. We have tax refunds. I'm going to make a motion to award tax refunds in the amounts as presented.
Oh, you missed B.
Missed, jumped over, Board Commission changes.
Yeah.
E.B.
I'm sorry?
You missed B. B, B.
Oh, I skipped the board, make it out of order or something. Okay. There we go. Boy, I'm confused with all this paper tonight. Linda, at the September 3rd, 2019, meeting of the East Adam Conservation Commission, the commission made the following recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, for the Board of Selectmen's consideration in action, that Mr. Joseph Zade move from an alternate to a regular position, replacing Mr. Paul Siena, who had previously resigned, that Mr. Bernard Gillis be appointed to alternate position, replacing Mr. Joseph Zade, and signed by Robert Smith, Chairman. And I will make a motion to change the status of Joseph Zade from alternate member to regular member to fill a vacancy with the term to expire June 30th, 2020, on the Conservation Commission. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will make a motion to appoint Bernard Gillis as an alternate member to fill a vacancy with the term to expire June 30th, 2020, on the Conservation Commission. Get a second?
Okay.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now, we will do tax refunds. I'll make a motion to award tax refunds, the amounts as presented, 19147 to ACAR Leasing Limited, $46.18 to CAB East LLC, $34.37 to Emily Marcello, $759.44 to Vault Trust. I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And public comment again? Okay, very quiet tonight. Selectmen's discussion, anything, Rob, or?
So, last week, we, or two weeks ago, we brought up the question of the gate at where the cones are at the transfer station. And since Ms. Lunt is here, I was wondering, was there any consideration of just putting some barricades in place to see if that would suffice, rather than spending $6,000 for a gate?
Well, the purpose of the gate was so that people didn't have to go over the scale every time going out back. So, it's just to save the wear and tear. For the trucks that are going to the back to haul out the dumpsters have to go over the scale.
But don't.
Wasn't meant for that.
But don't we need to have them go over the scale so they, so we know how much weight? Or we don't use our scale, we use theirs' scale?
We use theirs', ours really isn't equipped for that large of a truck. When it was installed prior to myself, it was to weigh for pulpy, for residential.
Okay. So, this would be, they'd have a button or something to raise or lower the gate? Okay.
Sue?
I'm nothing with that. I just wanted to bring up the SRO. Again, in our discussions, we had at the last meeting, and it really not about the SRO, but in our process for hiring a police officer. And I understand your comment, and at the time, you wanted to read your MOA, in that you followed the procedure of the MOA. And you did ultimately, because the first selectman makes the decision, and you made the decision. But you do have the last bullet of that MOA does say, the first selectman or a committee selected by the first selectman. So, it doesn't have to be, you were also on the panel of three, because all applicants who are qualified then go to a panel of three, police officers or chiefs, or a combination of both. And you had two officers and you as the chief. And then, I mean, we only have one candidate, it's kind of a moot point. I'm just trying to say that the process needs to be followed, and we shouldn't have one person making the decision, and a police officer, who is a member of our community and affects many different things.
In the end, we use three to make that decision.
You used, that's the panel of three that interviewed them, but in the end, it's the first selectman or a committee of his choice. And I understand, I guess your committee was, were two other police officers and yourself. But I just don't agree with it, and I'm just.
I didn't want to make the decision alone. I felt I wanted.
Well, you could also have a committee. That's a different step, because that panel of three then ranks them, of course, we didn't have a rank this time, because there was only one applicant, and then goes to another committee for an interview process, or just the first selectman. I mean, I think the wording's in there, I'm just trying to make a point that.
I got your point.
You need to change the process. The one person should not make that decision.
This entire process is going to be redo next summer, when we redo the police contract, because this is part of the union contract. This MOA is an MOA to the union contract.
I understand that, but the union contract will dictate how we, will not dictate how we hire a police officer. A union contract will not dictate how we hire a police officer.
Okay. So, as a follow-up to that, so whatever officer is chosen to be the SRO, that still has to go through the Board of Education, correct? Or is it? Yeah.
Yes, it does. They have the last word.
Well, but that one person, whoever applies, I guess.
Well, technically, it'd be any of the five officers.
Technically, yep.
I mean, if they reject it, the process would start over again, correct?
But the, who recommends to the Board of Ed? I mean, I haven't read this yet, so.
We post it, and we look for volunteers, and then they can interview the volunteers from within the police department.
Well, but we assign, it says we assign an officer. The town assigns an officer for the SRO. And then, the Board of Ed has to agree to it. Question is, what happens if the Board of Ed doesn't agree to the officer we assign? But.
Then we look for another volunteer.
Another police officer to take the position?
Yes, well, that's the whole point, is that we're never going to have more than, the whole reason we brought one on was to fill one as an SRO.
So, my question then is, again, if, should the Board of Education reject it, then it would start, the whole process would start over?
No, it would not.
We would seek another volunteer from within the existing police force.
Yeah, I understand that, but if no, we had no other volunteers, then, then it would.
We would provide an SRO and.
That is a weakness in the system, but I have already pointed out to them.
Okay, all right, because that's.
We don't want to simply have an enlarged police force by virtue of seeking someone to volunteer for this. And we've discussed alternatives to it.
What kind of alternatives?
No, I'm not going to talk about that here.
What, is that, that not public?
It's, no, there's nothing official at all. We speculated about how we might handle it. That's pure speculation.
So, are we going to see your final, before you sign it? This memorandum of understanding?
That's.
This is the final one?
That's.
So, you're not putting it in writing anywhere, how you're going to handle it? If that happened?
Uh, not at this point, because it's in the earlier steps, the MOA is where it belongs. And that's already been processed.
The MOA with the, the MOA with the union? Has already been signed?
Yeah.
So, what if all five of our candidates were rejected by the Board of Ed?
I've talked to Brian about that, and I don't have an answer that I can offer here in public. We've talked about what might happen, or how we might handle it.
Okay, so, I don't understand, but. That'll be a good question for candidates, I guess.
Anything else? I'm going to make a motion at 8:04 to adjourn the meeting. Get a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
You want, I'll talk with you, but.
And you should talk about it in public.